Hey, it's the Brian Hornback Experience. This is episode one fifty-seven. I've got another candidate. Uh, early vote is starting in about two days, February the fourteenth. This is being done on Lincoln's birthday, February twelfth, but hey, uh, you hear it when you hear it. Uh, but I've got Angie Gerther, 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 Gerther. I've got Angie Gerther who's running for third district Knox County School Board. Now, I kind of say that before I get Angie on here. Say that because my guys over there at Compass Knox, by the way, if you're not a subscriber, I am a subscriber. Uh, they do a pretty good job. Uh, they get an email every day, uh, when you are a subscriber and they have a pretty good website. Um, and they, they get more in-depth than Brian Hornback does on BrianHornback.com and the Brian Hornback Experience. Really good guys. Um, but Jesse, it's Gerther, Gerther. I mean Herman Goddard and the Goddard family over in South Knoxville, they're great folks, but it's Gerther, Jesse, Gerther. Anyway, just picking on those guys, those guys have a podcast. It airs on Sundays, they record it on Fridays. I recommend you listen to it. That's free. You don't have to subscribe to listen to their podcast. I encourage you to do that. Angie Gerther, how are you?
I'm doing well, Brian. How are you?
I'm good. So, let's see. Angie got involved a few years ago. Uh, I think you were the first chair ever for Moms for Liberty. Um, and that was something you did for a spell and you're not the chair of Moms for Liberty. And that group, for some reason, has chosen to endorse somebody else for school board, but that's another issue for another day. Um, but you've been pretty active in the community, but just real briefly, before we start talking about the third district in your bio, uh, I just want to say that it's been about twenty years since I left the school board. I got elected in two thousand. Uh, my term was over in two thousand and four, but when I look at your website and we talk about the schools that are in the, in the third district of Knox County School Board, we have Bearden High, we have Bearden Middle, we have Cedar Bluff Elementary, we have Cedar Bluff Middle. We have Ridgedale. Now, folks, those are not all the schools that kids in the third district go to. Those just happen to be the schools that are in the political geographic area of the third district. But when I was elected to school board, I had Alots, West Valley, um, Bluegrass. I had Cedar Bluff, primary Cedar Bluff Intermediate and Cedar Bluff Middle, and I had Bearden High. Uh, so when I looked at that today, when I was like, okay, we're going to talk about the third district, I'm like, man, the third district has fundamentally changed, but, um, anyway. Those are the schools, that's kind of the makeup. If you kind of look at Interstate forty and you started about Cedar Bluff, pretty much everything north of Interstate forty, except for a little bit of Cedar Bluff South. And these dogs, it's starting to rain outside and these dogs are like hovering around my desk right now. Um, so Angie, just kind of talk about, uh, the district and, um, and your involvement. And why in the world, before we talk about your bio, did Angie Gerther decide to run for school board?
Well, I guess I didn't realize that for years I had been standing up for kids and parents. And that was before there was any campaign or election or anything like that. Uh, I was always somebody who would ask questions and just kind of, you know, ask why we're doing that. Or maybe we look at something else or those kind of things when my kids, our kids were in school. And, um, and I will, I mean, I'll continue to do that no matter what.
Right.
That's just what's in me. Um, and so I did it before there was anything, you know, somebody wants me to be elected.
Right.
And so the, the big part was is that our kids, uh, John and I's kids, Cooper is almost twenty-two, Christina's just turned nineteen. And, um, when people would ask me to run, they never really said anything. And this time, when people were talking to me and saying, hey, why don't you run? Um, most of them were like, well, Mom, you've been advocating for kids and parents for years, so why don't you go do that as a school board? And I said, okay, we can look into that and see what that looks like. And so, um, I think our kids deserve the very best and we have to do better for our kids. So that was the premise of why I wanted to run. Um, I don't think kids get a whole lot of say, and you know how that is when you're growing up.
Right.
There's always somebody tells what to do.
Yep.
And so our kids are our future and we need to invest in them accordingly. And help them to figure out what they want to do and what they want to be. And help them to be the very best adults they can be.
Right.
And I, Knox County can have really, really amazing schools. We have a, you know, potential for it to be like the very best. And I'd like to be a part of that and see how we could make that happen for our children.
Well, and you were born and raised in Tennessee, so you're not somebody that just moved in because you're fleeing the northeast or, or the west. Um, and you came to UT a few years ago. And you and your husband, John, like you said, have raised a twenty-two-year-old and a nineteen-year-old who, who both, uh, went to Harden Valley Academy, both graduated. Um, your, your son's, you know, um, found his niche, uh, at Byington Sawway and now at TCAD. And, and your daughter's now pursuing, um, studying music at Tennessee Tech. Uh, but like you said, you, you've been involved for the past eight years. I think when people try to put somebody in a box, um, and I, you know, I've been doing, I've been politically active for forty-plus years. But when people try to put folks in a box and say, well, you know, she was chair of, of a group. Um, they're really minimizing the fact that for the past eight years, you've been deeply involved in Knox County Schools. I mean, you volunteered in the, in your kids' classrooms, you've served as a PTA president. You've helped coordinate music program activities. Uh, and, and let's also not lose sight on the fact that when Dr. John Ryswick, uh, became the superintendent of schools, um, he selected you to be one of the folks that served on his trans, on his, I almost said transportation team, on his transition team. Um, so, I mean, you know, people could try to put, and, and unfortunately in politics, and you're probably beginning to learn this. And as you stay in this for a while, you'll, you'll really begin to experience it. But people like trying to put you in a box, but I think that when they do that, you know, they don't see the grand scope of what you've really been involved in, right?
I think, I think that that's true about everybody. Um, when you, when you're trying to like do what you think is right and you're trying to be on the right side of things, I think you look for help to do those things. And so, um, you know, being involved in the schools was, you know, selfishly as a parent, when you're involved in the schools, you get to see who your kids are hanging out with.
Right.
And, you know, and they get to know you outside of your home, which, you know, is very beneficial for them to see. Cause you know, you remember when you were a kid, Brian, and you would go out in public and you would run into somebody's parents? And you would say, wait a minute, aren't they just always in the house where you live? And it's the same way with teachers and all those kind of things. But being able to be in the classroom and be in the school, I think it made the kids realize that it wasn't just about my kids or John and I's kids, it was about all kids.
Right.
Because I wanted to see the best for all of them, no matter what they wanted to do. And so I, I think that that's the way I always approached everything, uh, through my involvement with any organization that I was a part of. It was always about what was best for kids and allowing parents to make decisions for what was best for their own children in their education. And I still stand by those things. I think that, um, you know, parents should have a say in their kids' education. I think it's extremely important. And I think that getting more parents involved with our schools is crucial to them being the best they can be. So all those things lead you to that.
Oh, absolutely. And so this election, uh, the one you're running in, I guess two years ago, we elected, um, elected, re-elected, uh, five, and then now, uh, this off year, I called it an off year, uh, is, um, is the four races. Uh, so now we're going to complete what the legislature did a couple, three years ago when they said that school board had to return back to partisan elections. I mean, you're running as Republican. Um, I don't think there's any doubt that, that you are Republican. I'm a Republican. Uh, you got any great thoughts about whether school boards should be partisan, nonpartisan? And we won't spend much time on that, but that just happened to pop into my head as, as we were talking, as I was thinking.
Well, you know, I guess, I, it's like anything else, like you know, I've, I've found out that the school board does basically what the state, federal government tells them what to do. So the state decided that these races needed to be partisan. So if people don't like that, they need to go to the state, right? That's where you go and come about that.
Yep.
So, uh, you know, I mean, I think that we kind of do as we're directed to do according to the law.
Right.
Um, you know, I think that if you, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it should matter what letter is beside your name. If it's somebody who's willing to stand up and, you know, do what's best for kids and parents, I, I don't think it should matter.
Right.
But the stake requires us to do it, so that's where we are.
Well, that, yep, you summed it up there. So you've got a website, AngieForGreatSchools.com. And, and I'll put those links in the blog post and on, on the podcast as well. Uh, but you kind of outline, you kind of outlined four real priorities, um, uh, with your campaign. And, and the first one is, um, I've never gotten a text on that phone before, but okay, it didn't interrupt anything, so we're good to go. Um, so the first thing is literacy. Uh, you kind of talk about reading and writing or, or really the, I mean, that is the basics of education. And sixty percent of our Knox County students are below proficiency in English Language Arts. So just kind of talk about that and, and kind of where you, uh, would like to help, uh, lead the, the board, uh, over the next four years. Cause this is a four-year term, uh, in, uh, in, in helping direct that. I mean, obviously you're, let, let, let me also remind folks, Angie's running from a district. But when she gets elected, she's got to work with eight other people. That's a nine-member board that then helps create the plan and the, and everything going forward for the superintendent and his staff. So they have one employee, the superintendent of schools, he directs his people. But ultimately Angie, along with, uh, at least a majority of nine, get to kind of set the policy. So I'll let you talk about literacy.
Uh, obviously it's the cornerstone of anything we do. And I'm pretty sure you and I grew up with phonics-based learning for reading. And I believe that that is the best way to teach kids to read. Um, talking about curriculum and all those kind of things. If we can, um, instill a love of reading in kids when they're young, I think that that stays with them. And I think that those things benefit them way further down the road than just their time in school. But literacy is key to everything else that they're going to do. So we've got to get that one right and we've got to be focused on it. And, um, I believe Dr. Ryswick has, you know, and his staff have put together some really great programs that are really helping kids. Um, with the sore coming than where they are based on the segments. I think that they're working really hard to get the kids where they need to be to be able to move forward. So that, that would be my thought on that one.
Absolutely. And then you kind of talk about career and technical education. You know, it's really, it's, it's really interesting. Uh, back in the day, um, early nineteen eighty, uh, when I was in Knox County Schools, we had a pretty significant career and technical education program. I mean, I, I don't think it's any secret, uh, that people would, would find out that I was in the marketing. Um, I, I, I went through two, three years of, of marketing, uh, at Carter High School. Uh, but I mean, you know, we had everything from building trades to auto mechanics to everything. And, and over the last few years, some of that kind of went away because, uh, everybody was trying to put kids in a box and putting a, trying to put a, a square, put, trying to put a square peg in a round hole, uh, and was really pushing people to go to college. And, and that just doesn't always work for everybody. Uh, I know in reading your website, you know, your son found his career through career technical education, through TCAD after high school. My youngest son, same thing. Um, and, and fortunately Knox County has been moving in the right direction. Uh, I think Mayor Jacobs is, is to be credited for that. Uh, you know, we have a career technical that, that went to the old Magnavox plant up on Strawberry Plains Pike, Byington Sawway. Um, uh, which was in operation long before the Magnavox situation, Strawberry Plains Pike. Um, so just kind of talk about, uh, your, I guess, your twenty, twenty-thousand-foot experience with career and technical and what you'd like to see Knox County continue to do to evolve the career and technical program.
Well, our son Cooper is actually a diesel mechanic with Pinsky. And, um, he told us like early on in high school that he did not see himself going to college. And John and I both graduated from college, so we thought that was what you did. So when he came and sat down with us and said, no, I want to do a trade. And he had his whole, you know, presentation together of why that was better for him and why that would work for him. And John and I both grew up in schools where, when our friends, and of course we're eighty high school graduates as well. When our friends at high school graduated, they graduated certified to go and get a job as soon as they were out of high school.
Yeah.
There was no trade school stuff.
Right.
It was immediately, as soon as they got out of high school, they could go get a job in whatever of these trades that they could learn in the years they were in high school. So, uh, when Cooper told us he wanted to do that, we knew that he liked to put things together and pull things apart. I mean, that's the way he had been doing it. And he and John worked on cars from the time that he was little. And he was always interested in the way things worked and what made it work. So when he got to Byington, that was just his place. That was where he was supposed to be. It was where he was happiest. Um, it was all hands-on, which is what he wanted to do. And so, um, he, he obviously is a twenty-twenty grad, um, went to TCAD, um, had basically got his job at Pinsky while he was at TCAD. And so he has been with Pinsky for, I guess, this July, it'll be three years.
Wow.
So he's, he'd been working there since he was nineteen. And, um, you know, does service trucks, does all those kind of things. And really, really loves it because every day is different. He doesn't ever do the same thing twice in a day. And, um, he works on everything from the trucks you rent when you want to move something, Brian, or the big sleeper cab of the diesel that Pinsky rents. So he works on all of it. And so, um, I think having that, he can, you know, obviously contribute, you know, to society. He can be a, you know, productive adult. And, um, he did not go to college because that was just not on his radar or something he wanted to do. There are a lot of his friends from Harden Valley Academy that were exactly the same, that also ended up in the trades. So, and I'm just grateful that Byington was there for them so that they had that opportunity. And so I'd like to see it where kids all over Knox County have, you know, exposure to that. Because college is not for everybody. It's just not.
Right.
And so, but like I said, I think that we need to meet them where they are. And, you know, what we always say is, you know, whether they want to, you know, be employed or enlist or enroll, that's where we need to be for kids. Because if they want a job right away, that's great. The military is a great, you know, opportunity for a lot of kids in Knox County. And then if they want to enroll in college, that's the next step.
Right.
So I think we just have to, you know, be able to meet them where they are.
Well, and I think that's, I mean, obviously, um, our son's a, a, a little bit older. But, I mean, he told me that he wanted to look at, uh, diesel mechanic, he wanted to look at auto body, he wanted to look at, at auto tech. And so, you know, we, I, I figured out which TCATs were the best. Um, Harriman, Harriman had the best diesel mechanic program. We went down and looked at it. Knoxville had the best auto body. We went and looked at it. And then, uh, Jaxborough TCAD had the best auto tech and he ended up at auto tech. And so, you know, he's an ASE certified, um, auto, um, I don't want to say mechanic because that may not be the right term, but anyway.
Right.
So, I mean, so he's doing it. So, yeah, I mean, it's, every, everybody's got to find their way. Um, so then you also talk about being a band mom for seven years. Um, those, those were always the fun moms, um, let's not say the fun moms to watch. But it was always, uh, being a, being a farragut parent, um, it was always interesting to, to watch the band, you know, come out. I mean, you got, you got the kids are playing and then you got the parents that are there, uh, always being supportive. Uh, so obviously arts is, is important to you. So just kind of talk about arts and, and, um, obviously, you know, we talked about your son, but obviously now, uh, being a band mom and, and being involved in music, obviously your daughter's pursuing that now in, in her, in her studies, so.
She is. And I, I, I do think that our kids are, are stacked opposites, and I know that that happens in a lot of households.
Oh, oh, our, 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 our kids are complete opposites, for sure.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Christina was a, is an honor student. I mean, you know, like she's a serious overachiever when it comes to academics and all those things. And Cooper was way more focused on the Byington end of it. And she obviously was in band, she was an indoor percussionist because she is a percussionist, so she was an indoor drum line. Uh, did all those things in high school. And, um, also was a accompanist for the choir when they would go to contests. And, um, she played as an orchestra, so she played violin and cello. So she, she's very musically minded. And, um, I think that that's one of the reasons that she was such a great student is because music kids have that connection in their brain from, uh, music to academics. And I think that it's, there's something in there that just connects the two and it worked really well for her. But also music saved her during a time when high school was not what you and I experienced. It wasn't even what, what Cooper experienced. And so for her, music was the lifeline that she hung on to during her four years of high school at Harden Valley. And, um, she actually is at Tennessee Tech, she has, uh, recently changed her major to Bachelor of Science of Music.
Hmm.
Because her plan A was always she wanted to be a foley artist. And so you probably don't even know what that is. But when you're watching a movie and there are sound effects, that's a foley artist.
Okay, cool.
So she wants to do the sound effects for movies and Broadway shows and, you know, whatever she can do sound effects for. And, um, be a part of like the effect part of movies. And her plan B is to be a music teacher, um, was to be a, be a director and to do those kind of things. So Tennessee Tech was so great that, that when she told them what she wanted to do, they said, well, let's figure out how to make that happen. If that's your plan A, then let's figure that out. And so they're working with her to create a path for her so that she can pursue a career with, be a foley artist. But also she could get her certification so she could teach as well. So it's been really nice to have, you know, obviously they're a smaller school, so they're able to do those things. But she's part of the Golden Needle Marketing Band, she's in Drum Line there too. And so she's in concert band this semester and we actually went down Friday night to see their first concert. And it's amazing the jump from high school band to college band.
Hmm.
How talented those students are, the ones that are music majors, that are, you know, this is their love and their commitment. But the reason I'm so passionate about that is not because of all the fun I have with all band moms, let's not be wrong. Those band moms and dads are wonderful.
Right.
And they work so hard for those kids. But there are scholarship money that comes to those kids just like it does other people who are pursuing scholarships.
Oh, yeah.
And there are a large number of students in Knox County who benefit from that. So if they want to be enrolled and they want to go to college, if we expose our students to music and choir and orchestra and the arts of any kind, there are secondary opportunities for them there. And that begins meeting our kids where they are and getting them to where they want to be.
Absolutely. This next one's going to be pretty easy, I think. You and I will probably agree on it pretty well. Uh, you talk about teacher pay and you talk about how Knox County Schools must be competitive with our neighboring counties. The biggest challenge that the, uh, Knox County Commission has, in my opinion, uh, in twenty twenty-four is the fact that what they faced in twenty twenty-three in bringing corrections and patrol officers up to be competitive with neighboring counties. Not fault in that. I'm not fault in that at all. Uh, Sheriff Spangler did what he needed to do to fight for his people to get them a competitive wage to be competitive with Knoxville and the surrounding counties. It's great. But reality is, somebody can go now at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old, become a corrections officer making fifty grand. Somebody goes to college for four years, then, then they have to do a couple of years of, of, um, internship, whatever we want to call it, in the classroom. And they start making about between thirty-five and forty-two thousand dollars a year. So, I mean, obviously your website details teacher pay and the fact Knox County Schools must be competitive with our neighboring counties. But county commission's really got to try to address that this year, I think. Uh, I'm assuming you agree with that.
I, I, I would agree. And I know that most of those, you know, like the starting salaries that come from the state.
Right.
And like I said, one of the things that I found out is that Knox County School Board really makes policy based on state and federal law.
Well, they do, but.
So it's the state sits that down there, but I do believe that we have a number of teachers who leave for neighboring counties for better pay.
Without a doubt.
I think that, you know, we, we can't afford to lose great teachers. We just can't. Our kids really, really need that. And so we have got to figure out a way to address this, you know, where we all sit down and say, this is what's best for kids, how do we make it happen?
This past, this, yeah.
I agree with you on that, you know, that's what needs to happen is that we need to, you know, really look at it.
This past Sunday on WBIR's, um, Inside Tennessee Program, uh, John Becker and, uh, John North had seven area superintendents. Two of those seven are products, former teachers, former administrators of Knox County Schools. Uh, Mike Winsted, Director of, uh, Maryville City Schools, um, is a former director, uh, at Knox County. And Kelly, and I don't remember her last name, but she's up in, I think Scott or Onata, uh, also a product here. So there's no doubt that Knox County loses teachers. Well, I mean, I'm probably going to get in trouble with Christie Christie for saying this, but Garfield Adams worked here, went to Oak Ridge and then came back. So, I mean, there's all kinds of examples where they've left us and not come back. Uh, at least Dr. Adams came back. But, um, there, there, there is a bounce effect, uh, where people are leaving us for, for better pay. I mean, no doubt about it. Oak Ridge has always paid more money. Uh, they're a smaller system, but we've lost a lot of people. So, um, I guess the biggest breaking news in this school board election, and I know, I think it was announced today, being Monday, February the twelfth, is that you have been endorsed by four either current or former school board chairs. Uh, you've been endorsed by Patty Bounds, who is a Republican, uh, was served as a school board chair. You've been endorsed by Susan Horn, who, uh, is currently, um, well, I guess she's on her last seven or eight months. Uh, she'll be rolling off August thirty-first, uh, and, um, Lauren Morgan, uh, is, is the Republican candidate in the fifth district. Um, and then, uh, Christie Christie, who, uh, just stepped down after a couple of years. Uh, she serves in the ninth, uh, out in South Knoxville, has endorsed you. And the current Republican, uh, Chair, uh, Betsy Henderson has endorsed you. So, um, I mean, it makes you feel pretty good, I think, to be endorsed by four folks who have been in some form of leadership capacity with the board, I, I would imagine, right?
It, it, it is a huge honor. Um, I have great respect for all four of them and how hard they work, um, for our schools and for our kids. And I, I was really honored that they would consider doing that. Because I hope that, you know, I can, if I'm elected, I hope that I can, you know, maintain the standards that they set because they really, really work hard. because they really, really work hard. And Patty even works hard now that she's not on the board anymore.
Right.
She still works hard for kids. And I think that um Knox County has benefited from those four women uh being there for our children.
Well, uh, before we finish up, you've got a website, AngieforGreatSchools.com. That's A-N-G-I-E-F-O-R, great, G-R-E-A-T, schools.com. Uh, you can uh, on Facebook, you can search Angie for Great Schools. And on Instagram, you can search Angie for Great Schools. Um, and all those links will be in the blog post and uh hopefully embedded into the podcast if I can remember to put all those links in there, which I'm sure I will. But um, I, Angie, I'll just give you the last word to ask for everybody that votes in the third district to vote for you. Uh, wish you well. Again, folks, early voting starts February the fourteenth. I've said it, normally I say it on the front end of the podcast, now I'm going to say it on the back end of the podcast. If you've got a girlfriend, a wife, if you've got a boyfriend or a husband, if you've got a significant other, there's nothing better to do than to go cast your early vote on Wednesday, February the fourteenth, and then go to dinner uh for Valentine's Day. Uh, but you got till Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. And if by chance you just can't bring yourself to go to one of the early vote easy locations to vote between the fourteenth and the twenty-seventh, then you got to truck yourself to your voting precinct on March the fifth. Uh, Republican primary, third district, Angie Gerther. I actually did look at how I wrote that down just now. But anyway, um, Angie, I'll let you have the final word.
Brian, thank you for having me on. I'm uh so grateful for the people of District Three. Um, I've met so many of them and they have been so kind and so supportive of me doing this, especially for the first time ever running for office. And I would just like to honestly ask for your vote. I promise you that I have always been focused on what was best for kids and I will continue to do that when you elect me as your school board member for District Three.
Well, you summed it up right there, folks. In District Three, you need to get out and vote between February fourteenth to twenty-seventh or on March the fifth. Um, you know, when you become the third district school board member, I guess the only thing that I, that I really feel bad is that that person that represents the county commissioner from the third district, I've known her since nineteen ninety-nine. And you know, Gina Oster, she can be a hard act to work with, I would imagine. But uh Gina, Gina's a good one. Now, all that was in jest before she starts blowing up my phone. Uh, Gina's a good one. But um, anyway, uh, good luck to you, uh, and I'm sure we'll be talking to you again real soon.
Thank you so much, Brian.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. Bye-bye.